First act, I'm Commissioner Gage. For with me is Commissioner Sharon Bowles, Commissioner Jim Harvey. I take an action to approve our minutes held last week on November twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Alright, motion carries. Let's go to our first agenda item. So anybody looking at the agenda, we now have one thirty switched with two thirty. So we're gonna start with the discussion. We go to the amendment to the agritourism ordinance, Charlie Ewer, Sean Wilkinson, and Rick Grover. Charlie, are you taking this?
I am, yeah.
Go ahead.
And I don't know if he meant to start the video, but that's not started either on the Zoom.
What do you want to do?
The start, start video down the corner. I don't know if he meant to start that.
Oh.
Am I okay if they don't see?
Is this yours?
Uh, so just, yeah, just the goal there. Um, so I just brought you guys the paper version of this. We had an applicant in the Ogden Valley asked to allow agritourism operations to occur in the S one zone. S one is the shoreline zone.
Right.
Right now, shoreline zone, it just buffers around the Pineview reservoir. We also have some of it out west, but all, all the shoreline out west is owned by the state of Utah. So it's probably not as relevant for agritourism. As the applicant asked the question, the Ogden Valley Planning Commission expressed some concerns over the existing agritourism ordinance and how it seems like there are some uses that are in there that really aren't agricultural related. And there's seemed to be a lot of concern about maybe circumventing the ordinance to get short-term rentals where they're not supposed to be. Heard some planning commissioners say, you know, let's do an inventory of existing agritourism operations. And let's see if they're actually doing what they were originally permitted to do. And we looked into some of that and, um, and found that maybe there is some benefit to tightening up the ordinance. And so, um, as we got working with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, we probably did this over the course of five or six work sessions with them. We tightened up the, um, ordinance. We linked all of the activities related to agritourism to tourism, or excuse me, to agriculture. Um, there's a little bit of lodging that's still allowed. Um, you could still get like previously, you could still get like a, uh, a farmhouse that you could rent out. Uh, you could still do that. We just have to call the lodging house, um, now. Um, and there's a few other things we did as we were working with the planning commissioners. Um, took some of the terminology from the existing agritourism ordinance and removed it in favor of using terminology that's already existing in our code. Um, able to eliminate quite a bit of pages of code just doing that. And hopefully eliminate some future confusion because it was just redundant. I had a little bit too much in there. So as we worked with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, um, let's see, what else did we do? We, um, got into the F zones after that. So they were okay going to the S one zone and adding it into the S one zone. As long as we've made these other changes to make agritourism in general, a little bit, uh, of a tighter ship. And then, um, done with the F zones, it's allowed in the F five zone right now. They wanted to see it allowed in the F ten and the F forty zone. And so we expanded that to go to F ten and F forty where it wasn't previously allowed. As we were doing that, we thought, well, we've standardized, at least in a certain formatting, a bunch of our other zones, our A zones, our R zones. So agricultural zones, residential zones, commercial zones, we put them in a standard formatting, including manufacturing. Um, if we're making changes to the F zone, let's just do it now, uh, and standardize that too. Cause if you look at the current F zone, F five, F ten and F forty zone, it's just hard to get through. It doesn't match the rest of our formatting. So for FR one, FR three, F five, F ten and F forty, most of the chunk of what you see in those pages is just standardizing the formatting you see in those zones. Um, and then, uh, aside from that, at the very beginning of, of the proposal, you'll see a bunch of, um, definitions that we're just modifying the definitions to meet the intention, uh, of the agritourism ordinance. Overall, it really isn't making huge policy shifts from what the agritourism ordinance does now. It's a good ordinance. Its purpose is good. It just eliminates some of the loopholes, uh, that the Ogden Valley Planning Commission was concerned people were gonna use. And somebody said you can drive a truck through some of these loopholes, uh, and it leads you straight to nightly rentals. And so they wanted to tighten that up. We went to Western Weaver. We talked to them about it as well. Um, they were a little bit less concerned, uh, about the loopholes. Um, their biggest concern was if we tighten it too much, people aren't gonna use it. Um, they wanted to make sure it was simple for agricultural operation, uh, agricultural operators to use. Um, and so we worked with them to kind of, uh, soften a little bit of the hard edges that we put in with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. But then also, there were a few things that both planning commissioner, uh, planning commissions, um, wanted to see allowed outside of agritourism. For example, farm sales. Um, right now in the A zones, you can do, uh, a farm stand or a produce stand. You can do that, but it's specific to produce, right? So if you're doing something that isn't defined as produce, if you want to sell something off your farm that you're producing on your farm that isn't produce, fruits, vegetables, uh, maybe that's not allowed under your current zone. You'd have to get an agritourism permit in order to just do sales. And that just doesn't seem like what tourism is intended to be about. Agritourism intend to be about bringing in tourists to enjoy the agricultural experience, not necessarily about just selling things from your property. So what we did to try and help the planning commissions feel a little bit better about that is we took those uses out of the agritourism section of code.
What, what uses?
Um, so farm sales primarily. So it used to say fruit and vegetable stand. We deleted that use altogether and changed it to onsite agricultural product. Sales of onsite agricultural products. So you'll see that in there. And so essentially, if you have farm operation, you can sell what your product is onsite.
Well, I think if you check state code, uh, my good friend Mark changed that a few years back because there's a lot of people that were trying to do that. So if you, if you raise beef on your place, you want to sell a half a beef or full beef, you have that right to sell it. So I'm hoping we're not, we're not opposed to that.
We're go, we're going straight.
That state code.
Yep, we're, we're going straight in line with that. So
Okay.
Under our current code, if you wanted to do that, it sure looks like you gotta get an agritourism conditional use permit.
Two separate, so no.
So change.
You, you split them. Yep. Cause I believe they are, they are separate issues.
That's right. The other one was other kinds of agricultural operations like, uh, a rent-a-row garden, uh, community garden.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, you pick agriculture, you want to go out there and pick some pumpkins. Those are agricultural operations. You shouldn't need to get a tourism permit to do that. Cause that's not necessarily tourist oriented. Let's just go out and pick your, your pumpkin. So we took those out and we put them into the agricultural zones as just a permitted use. You don't even need a conditional use permit for them. Uh, we put a little bit of some limitations around like how big it can get, you know, we don't necessarily have all agricultural operators just doing a huge farm stand in the middle of a residential area. And so there are some limitations based off the size of your farm that, uh, we did put in here. But all intention was to make it a little bit more simple, like so that the, uh, the farm operators have to jump through less hoops to get some of the more simple uses. And then if they wanted to go the agritourism use, we at least have a more objective set of standards, um, that they will need to comply with. So that's the intention here.
Okay.
Any questions so far about that?
Questions?
No.
Okay.
No.
The meat and potatoes is mostly just formatting, but once you get to the back of it, that is where the agritourism ordinance changes state, uh, start. You can read through what that is. Um, a couple of the little sticking points, um, was how do we qualify an agricultural use in order to say that you can do agritourism? For example, if you grow one pea pod, is that an agricultural use? And can you do agritourism off of that? Or how would we qualify otherwise? Your current ordinance says that you gotta be qualified as green belt, you know, and so our land use code ties that use to a tax code, the Farmland Assessment Act. Um, that gets a little bit cumbersome. That tax code is a little challenging to read.
Yeah.
And so what we did instead is we pulled the pieces out of the tax code that made a lot of sense on how to qualify what an agricultural use is and plugged it right into our code. So now it's not a tax code, it's a land use code and it's our code. So if the state code changes, we still have something on our side that supports what we meant to, to say in the first place. Um, if you are gonna qualify, first off, the preview, the current ordinance says that you have to essentially meet the green belt requirements. Um, the proposal now says, if the land use authority has any reason to question whether or not you're an agricultural operation, then they can challenge you and you have to show that you produce enough to meet those requirements. But if it's obvious to the land use authority that you are an agricultural operation, they don't have to question. You know, they can just say, we're, we're good to go. And so that gives the planning commission the ability to say, you know, this really looks like you just want to do a wedding venue. And you grew, you know, a little bit of corn last year. That's not enough. So that gives them the ability to say, prove to us that you've got enough production, agricultural production to, to justify us calling this an agricultural use. Um, the other sticking point was under the current ordinance, it's really hard to tell where does the agritourism slash commercial component and, and the agricultural component begin? For example, how much, um, agriculture do you actually have to be doing to get a huge commercial use? And planning commission was concerned that people would be doing small gardens, obviously, and really big wedding venues, for example. So they kind of put a, uh, a ratio of no more than twenty percent of, of the property should be devoted to the agritourism use. The rest of it needs to be agriculture. So they keep it agriculture. And those are the big sticking points. The staff report that I'll get you guys, if you guys are comfortable with this going on the agenda next week, um, all in that staff report, I've got some guidance on how to read this, uh, in order of what I think is the priority of what you guys need to know. So that you don't read it cover to cover and waste some time because some of it really is just formatting.
Right.
Um, so when you get that, it'll be a little bit easier to get through, but figure to get it in your hands a little better than your hand.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions?
Not the sexiest stuff, but, uh, worth, worth doing anyway.
Commissioner Harvey, questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Well, I think yes. I think you're headed the right way. And so if I understood you, we're not tying it to green belt.
Correct.
Which makes good sense because, you know, you've got operate, the reason, I mean, I was there when they passed the statute to the state. You know, you've got people with one, two acres, maybe less than that in Salt Lake County that had the ability to go out and grow raspberries or whatever. And they wanted the ability to sell those. They wanted the ability to bring the public in and bring the kids in and pick the raspberries or strawberries, whatever it was. So I think, and separating that from a commercial is good. Because again, I agree with you. You don't want somebody running a wedding operation and using agritourism as kind of their designated use.
Right.
So I, I think you're headed the right way.
Great. I know someone who's got two and a half acres who he supports his whole family as well as two, three full-time employees.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's just a farm operation, uh, with his house on it. So it's got two and a half acres. A lot of it's vertical, but he's got the crop rotation down to the science. It is, it's pretty impressive what he can do. So we wanted to make sure that someone like that wasn't excluded.
We should encourage that.
Yep.
Yeah, I like it. Okay.
Cool. So are you guys okay with this going on your agenda next week?
Yeah. Good.
Next week, uh, will be the fifth.
Morning, agenda.
Morning.
Okay.
Double sessions. We got a double session tomorrow?
No. Well, we got a little, uh, ten o'clock.
Oh, we got the CRA. Yeah, okay. Okay, I think you're good.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, if you have any questions as you read it, feel free to shoot me an email.
There you go. Right there, it's towards the back.
Go through this tonight.
Go through this.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, in the back. Beautiful.
Yeah.
If you need sleeping material, Linda will come over and read it.
Thanks.
Just gave it to us.
All right. Human resources regarding twenty twenty-four vision. Okay. That'll be interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Is this a vision for human resources or Emily?
Human resources, yeah.
Okay.
All right, there you go. How'd you get a cut date so fast?
Um, for my bison? I won't call six months fast. I got it, I got it last June or July.
I thought, I still feel terrible about that.
No, no reason to. Hey, but I do, uh, need to see it. Chad can haul some up to, uh, Willard to our boy up there, Steen.
Oh, Jason, he'd do that for you.
Not bison, beef.
Oh, yeah.
My brother's got, I think, three or four stairs just to sell.
Yeah. Yeah, to sell up to Anderson's?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just to sell, not to cut.
Really?
So we're moving those cows on Sunday and his, his are all mixed in with Daryl's. So I can, will you see, or I can just call him and see when we can work that out to have him.
Yeah, he's got, I know he's got, uh, some personal stuff going on on, uh, Wednesday, so that won't be a good day.
Well, probably it'd be like Sunday or Monday or
Yeah, he'd do that.
Sunday or Monday. Be nice to do it all while we've got cowboys there to.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Hey, no, I, it's worked out good. It's actually better.
Okay. Well, good.
Yeah, and I made the sixty-five dollar donation to the bison, which I don't feel bad about.
No.
It, no, it was just too, it was getting too cumbersome with the
Not for us.
Well, the, no, not for you because of blood testing you have to go through.
Oh, yeah.
That was, you know, if I had the squeeze chute and stuff to put them through, wouldn't have been an effort, you know? So I'll, I'm actually gonna take two bison this week, uh, Thursday. Um, and then I'll keep, so I'll take those two. And I was only planning, if I was gonna ship the two young ones, then I was gonna keep the one cow. But so I'll just take two, turn them into refrigerator freezer stock and be good.
Yeah.
Everybody's happy.
Except the two.
Yeah, they probably not gonna be real thrilled. I haven't broken the news to them yet. I haven't broken the news, but we'll see. Way much to beat you up.
Uh, it's just.
Was it, it wasn't Court or was it his, was it Lisa?
Court, no, I, I told him that I would. Every time I've tried to talk with Lisa, she's not been, she's been nothing. She's not kind. She's not nice and I don't
No, she's mean.
Have time for that.
Let me stick, let me tell you this way, she's mean.
I don't have, I don't have time for that and I don't have to meet with her.
No.
I'm not going to.
No. Hi, Emily.
How are you guys?
Hey, we're doing good.
Thanks for joining us for supper.
Yeah, I appreciate the invite. That was the first time I've ever been, so.
It is?
Yeah.
They twist your arm and they finally, did you buy anything?
I didn't win, so no, I just
Did you get a tree?
We got a tree. Our tree got delivered Saturday.
Nice.
I got a wreath.
Yeah, you had to go get it though, didn't you?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, everybody outbid me. I tried on three different things.
The tree?
Um, not a tree, um, just some baskets.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
You know, uh, the, the slickest thing, and here's another one of those things that Lifetime Products has made and donated. Slick, that they took, they took a piece of Teflon. And I'd say the Teflon's probably forty inches by forty inches, a little bigger than three foot, but it's not four foot. So about forty inches by forty inches square. And then on, on one side of them, they got two slits. And in those slits are some webbing like, uh, seatbelt material and it comes up and then there's some loops to top. And they've made these bars like if you put, took the broomstick, but the, but Lifetime Product made it so that they're better than broomsticks. They've collapsed and they have handles on them, but what do you do with it? See, they took that tree, there was somebody on each side.
Oh.
They had somebody on each side of that tree. So the tree'd be here, then there'd be a guy there and they just lift it up like that, hauled it in, set it down, slid the tree off. Then the bag, the air did even better. The bag comes down and then the skirt comes out over the bag. And so now it's got the skirt around it. When we're done, we tuck the skirt in, lift the bag back up, tie it at the top. And then we gotta figure out how to, I'm gonna build something like that.
Wow.
I'm gonna build some kind of a
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
That was a slick, super slick way to do, carry a tree. Oh, no, all the decorations are done, the lights.
Yeah.
I'll find a place to put that son of a gun.
Oh, yeah.
For another year.
You've got your tree, no.
Yeah, it's delivered. It's sitting there.
I've always done it the old fashioned way. I just grab them around and get my buddy and, you know, then lose about half the ornaments as you go up.
Yeah. It was slick. Slick.
I hadn't heard about that. That's great.
They were in and out of there. If it took them ten minutes, I would, I'd have been
Really?
Nice. That is slick.
Uh.
It seemed they lost Commissioner Bowles.
Was, here she goes, Jessica, you know?
I think she's out in the
I think she's found. You know, uh, your husband's a lot nicer guy than you told us he was.
He is a nice guy. Yep, he is.
Well, I thought that was a good dinner.
I thought that was really good, yeah.
Hey, let me tell you, that green stuff was
Oh, that was amazing.
Yeah.
Need to get the recipe.
That green stuff was just right, whatever that was. How'd you come up with the green stuff?
Gosh, you just add everything.
I loved it.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
It was good.
The green stuff, whatever that is.
Like salsa.
It's a little spicy.
I like it spicy.
I know. Like it has on everything.
Did you just ask him, hey, will you make this for me?
No, I just, they came up to me and they says, we're gonna bring you some Cholula and some other stuff. I says, all right, great. Cause they know I love Cholula.
Yeah. Is that what that is, the green stuff?
Well, so then they made that other thing. I didn't even ask them. They just
Oh.
Not just nice to the people.
You're nice. He was waving.
It was good, yeah.
So are you going to the play tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll like it. Yeah, it's worth. See, so Sunday afternoon, I bet, I bet it was three quarters full.
Was it?
Yeah.
That's about six hundred, five fifty, five hundred, six hundred people.
I bet it was five hundred.
They said the turnout's a far exceeded their expectations.
Well, those guys are, those guys that put those, those actors are amazing. They do a good job.
How long is the play going for? Just this weekend?
Tonight, it ends.
Oh, tonight.
Tonight's the last night, isn't it?
Yeah, it ends tonight. Then they move, they, then they bust it like crazy to get the
The Nutcracker? That comes, that's here for a while, isn't it?
Does that start this week?
It does. I'm trying to decide if I need to take my granddaughter to that.
You do.
You do.
Yeah. Just ask her.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Emily, you're with us. Appreciate that.
All right.
We're now discussing regarding the human resources twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four vision.
Yeah, so I just have, I just kind of wanted to go over this with you, um, really quickly. So I just, I've been thinking a lot about the HR department and kind of how, you know, my vision for it, right? So I guess my vision would be, is to make sure that we turn the HR department into a business partner. So working with all of the different departments to be considered a business partner to work through all of their, you know, employee stuff, right? So you could see in this circle, um, you know, all of the different areas that the employee, that the HR department touches, right? You've got recruiting, talent, talent management, succession planning, compensation, benefits, all of that. And then on the back, of course, I've got all of these ideas and things that we need to do or implement in the, in the HR department. But what I really would like to do is transition these into, okay, really looking at what do the departments need from us?
Yeah.
And then taking their needs and basically then saying, okay, to my staff, okay, you know, let's set these goals or these go, goals. So for example, it would be going with and meeting with each department head or elected official and asking them and just sitting down and having a conversation, okay? Wh- where are we meeting your needs? Where do we need to improve? What, you know, what kinds of things do you feel like the HR department needs to help support you? And then taking their needs and putting them into goals. So for example, I know one of the things is events that I know, um, Linda has brought up. So looking at, okay, well, how can we be more inclusive for all of our departments and all of the events, right?
And if you, and if you solve that one for them, you'll start solving for culture parks and recreation too. And you'll start solving for the roads.
Yep.
Solve what?
To be more inclusive for events.
Of that, okay.
Sometimes when we have events, you know, like you have a pancake down at the basement here, it's tough for these outline things to come in, you know, the people from the transportation.
I get that. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and you know, another thing is like exit, you know, we do these exit surveys. And, but I really want to take more of an approach where we look at it as a quarter and look at, okay, and then send the data to the department heads quarter, quarterly, instead of just one-off when we get a bad exit interview and say, okay, over the quarter, you know, eighty percent of them said that they were dissatisfied with, you know, your supervisors or your pay or whatever it is. So then, and then we could do it each quarter, maybe the end of the year. So we get a whole view of how that looks. Because right now, I feel like, you know, we've been sending out just like the really negative exit interviews. And I think it's been, um, not received very well with some of the departments. And so, but again, I don't, I don't know, does that really meet their needs? Right? Does that, is that really going to help them? Or is there something else that we can do to help them? So that, so that would be, I guess, my vision is creating a partnership with all of the departments. So that's how I would like to kind of, you know, I guess, present, you know, present this to the department heads and then meet with them and try and become more of a partner instead of just, you know, HR is untouchable, or I can't talk to HR, or, you know, whatever the case.
I like it. Commissioner Bowles?
Actually, it's phenomenal. And Emily's told, told me about it and I think it really bridges that gap between the departments and HR where HR is sometimes just seen as, you know, the
Heavy hand.
The heavy hand, really. And like, you know, they don't make the rules, right? But they're the ones who have to, who have to enforce the rules. And, and sometimes it's just like, you know,
No, I agree.
That, that big brother always on our case kind of a thing. And not only that, but, um, in instances where employees feel like they need to reach out, I think it, it opens that door. And you talked about, about going down layers, like start with the department head, but then make sure that employees, you know, on the ground level, understand that HR is their resource and they shouldn't be afraid to go talk with HR if they have an issue. And, and I do know there are departments, um, that have been told, you know, we'll handle it here, don't go to HR. And, and we want to make sure that they foster that, um, that relationship. So people know that that's their resource.
Yeah, I like them.
So I, I love it. I think it's very proactive.
I, I like your partner is always, I think, a good place to start. Just one idea for you. You know, we always, you know, we push pay for performance and, you know, I'm gonna get on my soapbox just for thirty seconds here. But, you know, we always have difficulty as we talk to directors and elected officials about having those conversations, having those, I'm gonna call them interviews, whatever they may be, for pay for performance. I, I don't think it would hurt, you know, as you talked about exit and some of these other things. Um, a lot of those people that have come in those positions have not, don't have any experience with those one-on-one, okay, how do I do it? What type of questions? What am I looking for? To me, that would be a, and I, I, I don't think it's a matter they don't want to do it. I think it's a matter they don't know how to do it. And they don't, and again, it's not a comfortable, you know, for a lot of people that have never done it, they just, so it's easy to avoid. I, I'd like maybe for you to consider that, you know, through that, we call it a, you know, your partner, okay? Do you have, do you have problems with pay for performance interviews? They don't, let me, let's sit down and talk about it.
Yeah.
Here's some ideas.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a good idea. I'll add that to it. Cause you know, I mean, one of the things that I've been thinking of, I mean, this kind of ties in is right now, we have just a forum and it's just called, uh, written warning.
Yeah.
And I would like to change that to a performance improvement plan. So you're not just, you're not just warning an employee.
Yeah.
But you're working with the manager and the employee to come up with ways to improve their performance so that doesn't happen again. And, um, but we've got to, we've got to have that partnership with the managers because right now they're just kind of doing it and sending it to us. And I would like to have us be a part of that and help them, you know, have that conversation. Help them write up that documentation. And, you know, it should be a mutual employee and supervisor, hey, let's help improve your performance so it doesn't continue to happen.
Boy, this is great.
So
It's good. You're headed, you're headed right down the bright path you need to do, in my opinion.
What, what it's shown to me is that you've not just, you've put an incredible amount of care.
Yeah.
With this, not just thought. Boy, I'm super happy about this.
I, you know, I care about the departments and the employees and I, you know, I want them to succeed. And I don't, and I don't want to hear, you know, honestly, oh, well, you know, HR is, you know, untouchable. Or I feel like I can't go to HR. Cause that's not who we should be. We should be, like I said, we should be a partner. So that would be my vision. And then, you know, I've got to kind of, you know, train my staff. And then again, start working with the department heads down to, to, you know, and, and if their needs are something completely different than what I think, then that's fine. Then, you know, we need to look at that and, you know, does it make sense and what can we do? And, you know? So that, so
Well, I like it. I think you're headed exactly where you need to go. And I, you know, I like the idea that you sit down with the electives and the directors first and say, you know, Directors first and say, you know, tell us what, you know, what can we do to improve? What do you need from HR? Um, and, and listen to them. Yeah, I think it's great. So, yeah.
Okay, well, if you are good with that, probably in January, then at the extended department head meeting, I would like to present. The vision and then so they all kind of hear it and then we'll.
Is that okay?
Is that okay?
If, since this is in your portfolio, Commissioner Bolos, as long as it meets with your approval. And you, Mr. Chair.
I, no, I think this is something that, uh, I, I'm glad to see you've taken the initiative to start down this road. I mean, it's too easy just to sit back and do things like we've always done, which is unfortunately kind of the government way. So this is great. This, yeah, you said it right here, business. I like it. Run government like a business whenever you can.
It's Weber County Corporation.
Thank you for that reminder. No, I like it, Emily.
All right. Well, we'll move forward with that then.
I think you've got the green light.
Um, second thing, just real quick, and this is total, totally off the subject of the vision. But I've been talking to Scott Park and, uh, Cortland with the. Um, retirement contribution for all of the tier two hybrid that is going to be.
The URS and.
Yes, and we talked to the sheriff.
Starts in June or July.
Well, it starts in July.
July one.
And we talked to the sheriff and we talked to Linda and, and they were both in agreement. That it would be better to auto enroll their employees in January. And so the point seven percent or two point one four percent for the public safety. Would go into their 401K for the first half of the year and then it would kind of. Switch and go to the URS. So their paychecks don't go down in July. Because the concern is, is if we wait until July, their paychecks are going to go down. So we were going to put together some communication explaining this and what's going to happen. That would go out to all of the employees. Explaining if you're in this plan, it will auto deduct and you would have to contact HR if you don't want it to go in.
So from January one through June thirtieth, it goes into the 401K. Automatically July one hits and their paycheck stays the same. So that point seven percent or whatever then goes into URS. Yeah, that, to me, that's a good plan.
Because people, people get really, really upset when their paycheck goes down. Now they can choose to, you know, have us remove that auto enroll if, if they want, but. You know, in talking to both Linda and the sheriff, they felt like it was better to just say, okay, we're going to auto enroll you if you choose to not. You know, then let us know. So if you guys are also okay with that plan, we'll start to put together the communication because. You know, it is probably a touchy subject with.
Well, that's easier to explain. And then if you give, you know, if you give them the option not to enroll. Then you could look back and say, look, here's, we gave you the option on January first not to auto enroll in this. You were told that will go down by point seven. So, you know, it shouldn't be a big shock, but.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully. It'll be a shock, but.
You're still going to have people, but. Boy, the auto, auto enrollment, that just solves the problem for most of them.
Yeah, because then it auto, they auto enroll when, you know, increases. Take effect and so they, they don't even really, you know, and they're not out that money technically. It's just funded to their 401K. So it's really helping them. Save a little bit.
No, that's a great idea. I like it. You okay with that?
You, you okay with that?
Sure, you okay? I mean. And again, it's, it's, this is the opposite of that, but I, I, I like where you're headed. Do the auto enroll unless they renew.
So to me, it's, you come to us with the problem and they also come to us with the solution. That's great.
So I'll just work with Jessica to help put together the communication. We'll send that out. You know, probably. December, January first-ish, so.
When does that take place? First pay period in January? When you would start doing that or?
Yep, so we want to probably actually get it communicated out in December.
Yeah, so you want to get that out prior to the first of the year? I like it. Perfect.
All right, well, that's all I have.
Thanks, Emily.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
Lot better than I thought that was going to go.
Do you think we're in trouble?
He, yeah, he, he thought, boy, all sorts of stuff's coming down the road.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to talk about truth and taxation. But we've got ten minutes, so.
All right, we're back online for our two thirty discussion regarding truth and taxation presentation, Mr. Scott Park, Mr. Ricky Hatchery with us. Scott, go ahead.
All right, I didn't minimize the little Zoom participant view if you want to minimize that.
Yes, minimize that. We don't need to be there.
So the intention was to just kind of go over quickly the presentation that I'm going to be giving tomorrow in our public hearing to see if you have any questions, concerns, thoughts, or feedback.
Okay.
So I don't want to actually just give you the presentation right now. I just wanted to kind of talk through a couple of different points of it so we maybe spend some more time on the ones where I have questions on.
Yeah, if that's okay.
That's great. So I'll just flip through some of these slides really quick. And I'm going to keep it not in the presentation mode so I can jump back and forth between slides if that's okay. But if that if that's too small to see, let me know.
Okay.
So we normally start off every year just kind of talking about the county as a whole. We show that we have two hundred and ninety million dollars of revenue comes coming in, and this is how it looks. We also show we have. In this case, it's almost three hundred and fifty million dollars of money going out. And this is for every fund, everything aggregated together. This includes our capital projects, twenty million dollars to the O E C C, plus a whole bunch of transportation and ARPA dollar, which is why the expenditures far exceed the revenues. We have the savings for it.
So where does where does that extra sixty million come from?
So the twenty million dollars is from capital projects and or culture parks and rec for the O E C C. So that's twenty of the sixty. And then we have our transportation wake-up corridor projects.
Okay.
So those are projects that we've saved up a lot of money and they just haven't been getting developed this fast. So we continue.
So it's actually money we saved up, just not spent.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we've already budgeted for it in in previous years.
Okay.
All over, yeah. So I talk about this and then I like to to say, you know, a lot of these funds, you really don't have much control over, like our transportation way to way card dollars. You can say which road they go to, but you can't take that money and use it for the sheriff's office. You can't use it for public safety enforcement vehicles.
Can you make that exact statement tomorrow?
Yeah.
Great.
I'll hopefully remember the word again.
Remember the word and write it down. Take notes.
Thank you. Yeah. So but the intention of that is I show these two slides that show Hope County. And then we jump down to the general fund and basically say, look, this is what commissioners really have control over is the general fund. So that's ninety seven million, not two hundred and ninety million, but ninety seven million. And now that you you still have a lot of mandates that you have to fulfill, although you get to you choose how you fulfill them. So here's the revenues. Here's the expenses. You'll notice that fifty four percent of all of the money in the general fund goes to towards public safety. And then when we look at this broken up by function. Seventy percent is employee compensation, and it's because we're a service organization. We're not selling widgets. We don't have cost of goods sold really. We're a service organization, and most of what we spend is salaries and wages.
Yeah.
So we're not spending a ton on travel and training or equipment or anything like that. So at this point, I want to just jump in and hit the the elephant in the room, which is the tax increase. Why everybody's here is because we're proposing a thirty five dollar tax increase, seven point two five percent to generate another three point nine million dollars. We're going to talk then for a moment about when we say seven point two five percent, I'm not talking about seven point two five percent of your total tax bill. So we have.
That's an important thing to point out.
Yeah, we have this little animation, this 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 little pie. So we're talking about this little piece of the pie right here. And if you turn your tax notice over and you look at it, it's not even the full. County lines, it's just the ones that are in yellow. So we're not raising it on the geo bond. And we're not raising it on assessing and collecting. So it's those lines in yellow that would go up seven five point two five percent.
Okay.
Then we're going to talk about the need for it. So these are the four reasons that I wanted to hit. And I'm willing to any feedback that you have. I'd love to have. So first off, general inflation. I think that's going to be the easiest one to sell because everybody's feeling it. Second, we have more county inmates in our jail, and that means we don't have many beds to rent out to the feds. Third, our health insurance continues to increase. Three years in a row now, we're at fourteen plus percent. And then four, we have some competition, stiff competition in certain jobs. And so we're going to hit each one of those quickly. First one is inflation. I don't think I have to spend a ton of time talking on this, but I just want to say, look. Your household budget has been hit as has ours. So inflation's up, CPI is up eighteen percent from January twenty twenty one till now. Prices are up for fuel, for utilities, for materials, supplies, the repair costs, our construction costs, everything is up. And just like everything is up for every other household.
So we're so we'll go back to that one.
Yep.
So I think it'd be make sure they understand that Utah's actually increased faster than the state, or excuse me, than.
Yeah, yeah, our inflation is higher. And it was driven by energy shelter.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Ever gone to the gas pump lately?
It's down a teeny bit, which is nice, but.
I haven't. No, I.
You haven't?
Well, he he just plugs in his electric car and goes, I feel bad myself. I feel that truck.
Yeah. So we talked about the cost of social security inflation. It's eight point seven percent, and our tax increase is seven point two five. I don't want people to get confused and think those numbers are relatable. They're not. So when you look at what, so I went to the social security website, I polled the average retiree payment in twenty twenty two. The average retiree payment in twenty twenty three and compared the two. So from twenty thousand to twenty two thousand, up two thousand dollars. The proposed tax increase is thirty five dollars and sixteen cents, which would be one point seven five percent of what our most vulnerable citizen got during last year. And in fact, if we have a citizen that's making twenty two thousand dollars a year, they shouldn't be paying property taxes at all because of the circuit breaker tax abatement programs that we have.
You say that too?
I will. Anybody making under thirty eight thousand dollars a year, you likely qualify for tax relief unless you have, you know, ten million dollars in the bank.
Look at Ricky's new fancy notes.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
So you're so Scott, you're saying that the thirty five point one six is one point seven five percent of the increase.
Yeah. So our most vulnerable citizens.
Yeah.
Got two thousand dollar increase last year, of which we're asking for one point seven five percent. Thirty five dollars a year.
I wonder if you ought to put in a percent. So what was the percent increase, like seven percent?
So they got a an eight point seven percent increase. But if you look at this, this is actually a ten percent increase, a little over ten percent. And the reason is because it's all the retirees, including. So when you retire a year later. Your wages throughout your life were slightly higher than the people that retired a few years before you. So you actually get a little bit more. So so that's the difference. The majority of that's the cost of living increase. But what I really wanted to show is. Look, the average retiree in twenty twenty three is making two thousand dollars more than the average retiree in twenty twenty two. So that's, I mean, it's ten percent, even though the cost of living was eight point seven. Does that make sense?
I li- I like it.
So I just wanted to show the two thousand. I thought the two thousand was a legitimate number to show.
No. I just think you need to stress the point that the, you know, with that two thousand dollars, the average retiree, which is our hardest hit population, is only paying one point seven five percent of that total increase. Not of their, that's of the increase, not of their total, right?
Yeah, yes, correct. There thirty five dollars of the two thousand dollars is that one point seven five percent.
Okay, that's a good slide.
Yeah, so and I'm I'm I am. I'm not trying to like minimize the impact of taxes, but I'm trying to show that this is a modest tax increase. Okay, the next point is that our revenues are down. So we used to have a bunch of beds that were free that we would lease to the U S Marshals. Well, those are now being filled by county inmates. So we're losing about two million dollars of revenue a year on federal inmates. But our costs are the same. We still have the same number of mouths we have to feed. We have the same number of bed sheets to wash, costs the same amount to have officers and healthcare and all that sort of stuff, same amount to transport them to and from court. So we're just down two million dollars because we're filling our jail up with more and more county inmates.
That's a good slide, too.
Third slide, health insurance costs. So this is the third year that they've been one point four million or more, fourteen percent. So we're up four million dollars since twenty twenty one. And the county pays eighty to ninety percent of the increase. We asked the employees to pick up the rest of it. But lest anybody think that we're giving this premium product of health insurance to everyone, we went out, went to seven separate carriers this year and asked them to bid on our health insurance, and all seven of them told us to stay with our current provider because they couldn't touch their rates.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're providing this premium health insurance that's way above the market. We can't even get other people to bid on it. Our rate is so good. And yet it's still going up one point four million dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So I wanted to focus now just a little bit on the attorneys. So here are the attorney wages, and it's a kind of a busy slide. I realize that, but I put everybody on there from twenty whose bar date was twenty fourteen or later. So that I can't be accused of cherry picking the data. And I just want to, so this is the, these are the attorneys that are in the first third of their career.
Okay.
And you can see what we pay at Weaver County versus Davis Salt Lake and Attorney General's Office. And I want to focus just on this twenty twenty one number.
I don't know.
So are these new attorneys, the people we're competing for that are just brand new out of law school, we're paying thirty eight dollars an hour. Davis County is paying ten dollars more, twenty one thousand dollars a year more than that. The Attorney General is paying fifteen dollars an hour more, thirty three thousand dollars, and Salt Lake County is paying seventeen dollars or thirty six thousand more a year for those same attorneys. And in addition to that, when you look at our caseloads. We expect our attorneys to do two hundred and eighteen cases per year, basically one per day. Davis County expects one hundred and thirty nine and Utah County one hundred and eighteen. So we're paying them thirty thousand dollars less a year to do nearly double the work that their competitors are doing. And what this results in is you look at Davis County and over half of their prosecutors came from Weaver County. We're training them so that they can go work for more money and and have less to do.
Yeah.
So we need to address that. It's not sustainable. So what we're proposing is a three percent increase cost across the board for every employee. Pay for performance bonuses based off of evaluations between zero and two percent. Other targeted market adjustments, these are the long javies of U R S adjustment for public safety between zero and four percent, and then certain other market adjustments to help us address our attorneys and several other positions that are just so far behind the market that we can't keep up.
Hold on one second. Can I ask a question? You call them bonuses.
Did I say bonus?
That's not what it is, right?
It's a pay for performance increase. It's not a bonus. It's an ongoing increase. So performance base increase between zero and two percent. Other targeted adjustments between zero and four percent, and then certain market adjustments to hit those positions that are still far behind the market after we've done those other adjustments.
Are there others besides the attorneys?
Um, we had one engineer and we have one other person.
So the attorneys are the only ones that's like a collective group then.
The attorneys being public defenders, civil criminals, yes.
I'd like to comment if I could, Mr. Chair.
Do it.
It wasn't just the attorneys, though, that we found. So it was not not the attorneys on the second floor, but it was also.
Public defenders.
Public defenders. But we also learned uh that it also had to do with uh the nine one one people.
Uh huh.
That was in the same bucket. They the state gave them a thirty percent increase.
They got moved over to public safety.
Now, while that's not in our budget, but that's there. There are several, and this is all caused because some of those places in the state were so. I I you could say hurting, but I'd say mismanaged. They didn't step it up for over the years. That's causing a reactionary hurt to all the counties.
Well, they were a little behind us, and you know, we were paying about market rate, and they did a big huge leapfrog. Well, now, yeah, everybody else is is letting react.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the only thing I think you should make mention of when you start talking about attorneys is just look, so we're required to follow statute, one of the things that the state requires. Because somebody might say, well, why do you even have to have attorneys? So we're required under state statute to provide attorney services for not only the criminal element of our county, but also uh any type of public defenders. We now have a contract with the state. Basically, I just say, look.
Yeah.
We we're required by state, whether it's public defenders under contract or public defenders that we now have, we're required to provide attorney services for both.
Yep.
We don't have an option.
Correct. I'll mention that.
Yeah.
And I do want to point out on this slide that we commissioners have addressed some of these positions with ongoing funds, a lot of these positions with one-time bonuses to get them. You know, to placate them until we could get through this budget cycle.
Yeah.
So we have made some adjustments to this, and I'll mention that that we we had to do some things. We had to do a couple of tweaks right away because we couldn't even keep our attorneys, you know, we were going to lose fifteen percent of our staff in a week.
Yeah, they were. They were headed to Salt Lake.
In their hands, and we so we had to do something, but we need to be able to pay for it.
Yeah, they were headed to Salt Lake. Yeah, we know that.
Okay. So what has the county done? We went through, we asked every department in the county to relook at their budgets.
There you go.
Eighteen of the twenty three departments that are funded in the general fund came back with an average cut of fourteen percent of their travel and training and two percent of their current expenses. So we were able to reduce our budget two point seven million. So that's a lot. It's just not enough to cover all of those additional costs. Which is why we're out here now asking for a tax increase. So if we don't do anything about it, we're not going to be able to hire and keep our critical staff. It's going to result in fewer services that we could provide. We're going to have to start deferring our capital facility maintenance like we were back in twenty sixteen, and we wait for a two dollar project to become a fifty dollar project because we waited till it breaks. And then we're going to have to start bonding for major capital, major capital projects, such as the parking lot that we're required to build um out in the back of this building and several other projects that we have. So the cost of doing nothing in the long run is going to exceed the cost of doing something now.
Yeah.
Then I want to pull up this slide from this taxpayers' association. This is a quote from them. Now, they're the not-for-profit that serves kind of as the the watchdog for the taxpayers, and this is from their site. We recommend that taxing entities issue a modest tax hike increase every five to seven years to capture the impacts of inflation. More frequent increases implies poor budgeting, and less frequent generally forces a much larger increase at a later date. Our last general fund tax increase was in twenty sixteen, seven years ago. What we are trying to do is exactly that. We want a modest tax adjustment now to avoid having to defer maintenance, wait for everything to become a big problem, and then ask for a twenty five or thirty percent tax increase a few years down the road.
And if they don't believe that, have them call people up in the unit county that faced a seventy three percent tax increase because they hadn't done one in twenty years. And now people, I mean, their tax bills are going up, what, an average of like a hundred and eighty, two hundred bucks?
That's a it's a great quote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't I don't like their choice of word hike.
Yeah.
But whatever.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You said you said increase and you said adjustment. Why are those words? That's a great quote to have.
Yeah. Um, and so from this point then, what I'm going to say is this is the proposal. This comes straight from our website. It's a little wordy, and I can shrink it down, but they're proposing, we're proposing a modest tax increase of two dollars ninety three cents per month or thirty five dollars per year on an average home is a fiscally responsible solution. I can pull off this last paragraph if you think it it kind of just restates everything that we've said before, but just as a summary. You know, it helps us bridge the gap along just continue.
That's not even taxes. You're a lot there. I don't have, I don't know. I haven't purchased. I'm just, no, you would.
I just lifted.
But I'm telling you, I would say.
I had.
Ground it every now and again. Decap.
Of course.
Oh, didn't know that. Yeah, that's nice. No, she just does decap. Five, six bucks for a lot to. Yeah, there you go. I'm gonna tell her to come back on our lots. I'd like to go out and buy some more lots, but not case. Yeah, not teak. Yeah, okay.
Well, and
Yeah.
I mean, we acknowledge that this is a burden on our citizens, that with other people raising taxes, it is. It is a burden, and we acknowledge that. But what we're trying to do is make a modest increase now so that we don't have to do a major increase later because we weren't managing well our repairs, our maintenance that we're we're doing the housekeeping items along the way. So the next steps would be then to take any public comment um at that meeting, and then um we'll take the next week to evaluate the comments, and then we'll meet back together on December twelfth at ten a m. to adopt the final budget and approve the tax increase at that time. So we we have, unless we approve the tax increase tomorrow night, we have to tell them the date and time of when we're going to approve it. So that's why we have that slide up there. And that gives us.
Over that one more time.
Which.
Say that one more time.
So if you don't adopt the tax increase at the public hearing tomorrow night, you have to tell. So if you don't adopt the tax increase at the public hearing tomorrow night, you have to tell them when you're going to adopt it. So the next time we're gonna meet to adopt the final budget is December twelfth, the ten AM.
Okay.
So all we, all we have to do is just let them know when, if we're not taking the action tonight, when are we taking the action?
You know, we'll have tomorrow night and we'll have December fifth.
So do you want to do it tomorrow night or wait till the twelfth?
Do you have a preference on that?
The only reason why we'd like to wait till the twelfth is because we take the payroll data that we're paying right now and we process that and update the budget. So we have the latest data in the budget books that go to the departments. Plus, we have a couple of little things that have popped up. We have a meeting on the fourth to discuss. For example, property taxes for this building. When we bought this building, we were already past the final budget. We didn't realize that we had to pay thirty thousand in property taxes. So that's not in the budget anywhere. So it's just things like that. We just want a minor tweaks.
So you, you, your suggestion is we wait till the twelfth?
We study it out and wait till
That's how we've done it historically.
Okay.
And I give that the, on the first bullet point, that gives people another week.
Yeah, and I
Mail and like, that's a good gesture too.
And I like that too. So you got a week to talk about it and we'll, we'll take your emails.
Two weeks. Tomorrow night it will be two weeks because another week would be
Oh, yeah. Why'd you say we'd take comfort of the next week? And we meet on the force to deliberate and then pass it on the drive. Okay. However, you want to, I can change that word.
So do you want that side to change to say two weeks or you want to say cutoff for public comment is the fifth?
Well, um, our meeting is on the fourth, so I was gonna cut it off then because if they, if they haven't told us by the fourth, I need time to actually finalize.
So actually their public comments a week.
Yeah, public comments a week.
Whatever respects the people, I'm okay to wait till the twelfth, actually.
Yeah, I am too.
But keep in mind, we need to tell them their comments will only be accepted to the fourth or fifth.
Yeah.
And then
Because we need time to process them and then you need to tell, I need time to actually make the changes in the budget document all the way through to have the book finalized, printed or
You won't be doing that based on public comment then?
Well, it'll be based off of your reaction to public comment. So
But you won't know that till the twelfth?
I won't know that. Um, we have a meeting on the fourth. I'm hoping that any comments, any adjustments to the final budget will be decided on the fourth, December fourth.
Work session.
Yeah, no work session.
Work session on the fourth.
And then we'll pass it on the twelfth. Yeah, yes, you can make changes on the twelfth if you wanted.
Okay.
I just won't have an updated budget book.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Merry Christmas. So how many people do you think we're gonna have speak in support of this?
He's making
That's a fair question.
Making him take a number.
All right. So I don't think we have to worry about taking five, four and five against my question.
I think there'll be more that are opposed and I think they're opposed just because taxes in
No.
Yes.
Well, because they look, ninety percent of the people are gonna come in and say, look, you charged me two thousand dollars more than you did last year. So you guys, you know, you dirty dogs pocketed an extra two thousand. And then we're gonna have to say, well, look, if you look at all your line items, we actually didn't. And we haven't done anything since two thousand sixteen, but um, so Ricky, you're gonna be there, right?
Yeah.
So I think we want to put them on a time clock again.
Okay.
Make sure we have our clock.
Hey.
Get it ready for the fifth.
Can you do me a favor too?
Yeah.
I can't because it's tough, kind of overrated. Can you move it out over there in front of Craig or something?
Yeah.
Or even put a different clock. I can't see it over there.
Yeah, I can't either, so.
You run the clock, don't you, Ricky?
I do.
This'll give us a warm up for the fifth. And do we have a a way to put a ringer on that clock when it hits?
I don't think so. I don't see any sound options.
Okay.
It's gotta be like twenty, thirty years old. That thing is
Turn off the mic.
I wonder if we ought to get one. Well, can we turn off their mic? I mean, who has control their mic?
Um, I think you do and
Oh.
You know, I could put the timer on my phone and just sync it with that and have my mic next to the phone so that the timer
That's what I used to do as a chair and I used to put my timer, hit the same thing, anyway, I would hold it up to the mic. You know, when those, when the people from Carolyn and your others would
Change your alarm sound?
Carol, yeah. Okay, I'll do Angry Cat. Don't like that.
Well, if we can see that and if you can do that, I'm thinking we do.
What do you think, three minutes? I think three minutes is fair.
I will say I've had probably two dozen or more phone calls. Um, the vast majority of them just had questions on what the amount was because we follow the format the state gives us and they think that their increase is five hundred dollars. They don't realize that they're paying four hundred and sixty dollars right now. So when I say your increase isn't five hundred dollars, it's it's thirty dollars, it's forty dollars. Most of them were were happy with that and were were just happy that it was only thirty bucks.
Yeah, I
I'm guessing the comments are gonna be very general probably about tax increases.
I think, I think they will.
Other entities and
Now, we do have in the tentative budget, the Center of Excellence that where we have made the decision to pull that out, but it was, we'd already passed the tentative budget. So that's one thing that we could talk about in there. But unless we lower the tax increase, it, you know, that just helps us save more money for the future.
Well, we don't know exactly what we're, to me, we're gonna end up giving a portion of that to the Health Department.
Mm-hmm.
To ma, I mean
I thought that with, everything we were transferring over there was grant funded, I thought.
The Health Department is gonna be, the the COE portion is gonna be covered with those grants.
With grants?
Yeah, because they
So what did
We are no longer contributing for the general fund, right?
Well, after the end of this year, that would be correct, yes.
Okay, so you don't see us using any general fund? You you see them asking to increase their budget though because of that, or do you think they can actually?
They're asking to increase their budget because of the compensation or increases that we're giving are
Yeah.
too hard for them, in their opinion.
I guess that's where I'm coming from is we're, they're didn't ask us for an increase.
They are, but I think we've got a year or two before we have to.
Okay.
Um, one of the things I'm not going to show, just I think it was too much, but I do have the fund balance forecasts in here that I usually would show. Um, and the Health Department, it's going to burn it down, but I think that that's plenty of time to make adjustments and to see where they actually land because sometimes they're projecting, as as all people, they project expenses a little higher and
All right.
A little lower. So I'd say we just watch it.
So how much, how much is in the COE? That could be tr- saved for future use? How much is in?
Four sixty.
Four sixty was the general fund contribution.
Four sixty?
Yeah.
Wow. Fair.
But if you, I mean, that it's really probably closer because we were gonna start making them pay their admin expenses and putting that out restricted. So it's probably closer to three hundred and fifty.
That's wrong, go work, that's over. Well, I was, that's what's going through my mind.
That's it. In order to fix this health uh, forecast fund today, we'd have to raise taxes even higher.
Yeah, if we wanted to fix it today, although I'd I'd argue it doesn't need to be fixed because it's within our projected, it's within our acceptable market.
It's still above.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. I'm I'm with you. I just, yeah, and look, by the time it gets between the high and the low, we're clear out there to twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight.
Ah, I'm gonna love that.
So commissioners, we do have the money that we're transferring into capital projects. We have three point seven million of ongoing funding and we've talked about that, that if if we need to make an adjustment, if we need to lower the tax increase for whatever reason, then that's where we would pull it from. So whatever number you tell me, that's where, and I'll come, I'll have the different scenarios if you pull uh, just in two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increments, you know, if you say you want to cut five hundred thousand dollars from that, I'll be able to tell you what the new tax rate would be. Um, but I was planning to have that ready unless you have other things you want me to bring prepared and questions you want answered or you'd like to ask in the media.
But I mean, let's be, let's be honest here, for five hundred thousand, it goes down from thirty-five a year to thirty one or thirty-two. So we've already told people thirty-five. I, my personal opinion, just speaking for myself, you know, I don't, I don't think we gain anything by saving two bucks, three bucks.
I agree with you.
I mean
It just means we have to do another tax increase a year or two.
And all, and all then we're gonna do is make it closer the next, you know, the next time you guys do it. Um, we hire. So I just invite the bullet now, get it done.
Right. Any other thoughts or feedback on this? Anything that you um, or uncomfortable?
Commissioner Bollos, any questions, concerns? Commissioner Harvey?
I don't have any questions and once again, Scott, you're not. You've done so good for so long that you're no longer exceeding expectation. You're just kind of staring. I'm going on such a high pedestal. I don't know that you can move. And the ceiling is made out of plate steel, so you can't break the ceiling anymore. It's not glass.
Oh, it's not glass?
It's steel, it's plate.
Wow.
Yeah, it's solid plate steel. So until you can rust through that thing.
Okay, I'll have to figure that one out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's great.
Stop now.
You know, I don't expect a major uprising.
Mm-hmm.
I may be surprised. I think we'll have a decent crowd, but I think a lot of them will be there to ask questions.
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
I'm gonna go twenty, between twenty and thirty people.
I think you're probably about right.
Yeah, I hope so. I hope
You'll have Toby here.
Yeah. I'm hoping this slide really gives context to what we're talking about. It's, we're we're asking for thirty-five dollars.
Yeah.
We realize that that's a burden to ask for anybody, but we we intentionally made it so that it was less than the cost of social security increase for our most vulnerable citizens.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. Make sure we stress that.
It was double that. We didn't design this around social security. We designed this around being the most efficient we can. It just happened to be just under social security, which we're glad about.
Yep. Okay. That's all I have, commissioners, unless you have any questions.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll see how it goes.
See how it goes. Famous last words.
But I, but I think we do want to make sure that timer's working visible.
Yeah.
So there's, I just want to be fair to everybody.
Yeah.
Hey, it looks like we got the sheriff online.
He's out of town.
Is he? Oh, did he go on?
Want to miss.
Hopefully headed on vacation or something after that.
Yeah, he didn't know where he was going, but he was going.
Headed out.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Thanks, guys. Well, we're back on schedule. Sheriff Harbun, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Hopefully you're in a nice warm spot or whatever you enjoy doing.
Well, uh, my uh, wife and I said, we're gonna go out of town. We're just gonna pick a place on the map and go.
Yeah.
Fortunate, the unfortunate thing was is uh, just the other day, my father-in-law passed away. So we are in, we're in Oklahoma City right now.
Oh, wow. Well, sorry to hear. Jeez.
That's okay. Thank you.
I'm sure you're gonna get to Tahiti another day this month.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of opportunities for you to be at those warmer spots. Anyway, welcome. So we're now, it's your three o'clock update, Sheriff, so the time's yours.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. I I'm sure this will be pretty short. Um, first, uh, let me express appreciation for um, everyone's support on the bond. Uh, it it was a you know, it was a great run. We did a good job. We we got the messaging out. Uh, just looking at the numbers, uh, you could see where surprisingly, August city was uh, was good with the bond. It was uh, yeah, unincorporated areas that just didn't seem to to see it. Uh, a lot of feedback was nothing against the jail. It was, they just didn't want to pay taxes. Uh, and and that's the, that's the thing that was uh, surprising to me. I thought there'd be more uh, concern about the jail, uh, but the most of public is favorable to the sheriff's office, the support. It just came down to, here's a tax uh, that they can vote on and they just voted no. Um, and that's okay. Um, one thing I want to make sure too that everybody knows is my staff and I, nobody's pissed, nobody's upset, no one's angry. Uh, candidly, we just think here's another great opportunity uh, uh, to to uh, push this thing forward. So that's where we're at. Um, lastly, on the bond part, um, I I talked with John Bond about uh, what are some other options we have? The county. And I said, I just want a brainstorming meeting to put blocks together to see which one fit, what doesn't fit, what are options? Uh, and and I asked John, who do you think would be to uh, with this in this first uh, first initial brain uh, post-bond brainstorm meeting? He suggested uh, Scott Park. And I also suggested Commissioner Bollos. And we both thought that'd be a great group along with Chief Reese and just see where we're at. So we're gonna try and meet together next week and just see what is an option, what are some ideas? No decision-making, just ideas. So uh, uh, that's pretty much all I have on the bond.
Well, that's great. No, I I agree with the sheriff. I think it was just a matter of people were just oversaturated with, I mean, quite, let's be honest, the school districts have hit everybody hard the last couple of years and everybody just looked at their tax notices and with the economy, with inflation that we just got through talking about, I, you know. Um, I, but you did a great, you know, that whole crew, Commissioner Bollos, everybody did a I thought a fantastic job of staying uh, you know, very informational, not emotional in terms of uh, you know, that it could have gone and uh, it was a good education for the public.
Yeah, it was uh, good. Uh, lots of stuff. Um, there's, there's always things that we can improve on when you look back and assess things. But uh, yeah, we all did a great job. Team came together. And did a lot of good things. So, yeah, but uh, any questions? Uh, comments or anything like that, uh, commissioners?
Questions? Commissioner Bollos, this is in your portfolio.
Yeah, we talked, I talked to the sheriff on Wednesday morning and and I told the commissioners that um, I think that he called me and told me about the meeting and and I just appreciate Sheriff, your um, positive outlook and the way you just came together immediately after to talk about, you know, what what we can do moving forward. That's a, it's a very productive um, assessment. Um, so I appreciate that. And and you guys, you know, we all worked our tails off.
Yeah.
Do what we could and and we fell short, but you know, there are needs that we still need to discuss, so
Yeah.
Appreciate your, you know, comments moving forward.
And I I don't disagree. I mean, the needs haven't gone away. Obviously, we'll just have to discuss, there'll be some discussion on how we get there and what we do, but that's, that'll come about. I got faith in this.
Sorry, I cut you off. Go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Um, uh, one other thing to note is uh, surprisingly, uh, a lot of the uh, what what we would call in political terms, the the far right, uh, surprisingly, many of them reached out to me and said, hey, uh, you know how we feel about taxes? Uh, but we all want you to know that we supported you. What can we do to make sure this goes through? And I'm thinking those are words I would never have heard come out of a, a lot of those in our party uh, stated. And and I think you all know who I'm talking about. And uh,
We do.
Uh, yeah, and and they were genuine, they were sincere. Uh, Debbie Wil- Debbie Williams reached out and said, I need to help you. What can we do? Uh, the the Democrat Party leaders, same thing. So there's just a lot of people that that know about it that feel that it's the right thing to do. We just gotta come up with other solutions, so. So other than that, no, I'm I'm really though, I[1683.68]